This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order. It is Thursday, May 21st, 2019. And we have a quorum. So we'll start with the first item on the agenda. That is the consent agenda. If you have a motion regarding approval of the consent agenda, appreciate it.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Malvika. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Now a call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 For both. Thank you. Next item, public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one, go on to the next agenda item, which is reports. First report is Friends. And Laura is not with us, so Amy, do you have a report with the Friends?
Yeah, at the last meeting, the Friends had quite a lot of discussion about officers and how they want to recruit new officers and make sure that as they're doing that, they're looking at succession planning. They are going to be doing some of the same things that the trustees are in terms of working out the job descriptions for the various officers. So folks know kind of what they're signing up for with that. And then as part of that, they're also going to take a look at their bylaws and see if those are up to date in terms of what the officers are currently doing and their responsibilities. They're looking at recruiting some new members. I think they're getting close to their minimum number of board members that are looking to recruit some new members. So if you have any suggestions for folks who would be interested in, you know, the library supporters, not all of the Friends board members are Davenport residents, so that's not necessarily a requirement the way it is for trustees. They simply need to be supporters of the library. And then the Campaign Committee, their next meeting will be next week on Tuesday. Wednesday, Wednesday.
How many do they need to have to have a full board?
It's a number between eight and 20. So anywhere in there is fine.
Oh.
20 is probably a little large. Eight is a little small.
Okay. At medium.
10, 12, 14, somewhere in there.
And Amy just said they need not, I mean, they are, they need not be citizens of City of Davenport?
That's correct, because they're a fundraising arm. They're not a governing board. Okay. So they're a private, not-for-profit organization.
Thanks.
Thank you. Finance? Like that? Personnel? Adder?
I have no update other than I've got to get together with Amanda.
And she's on my phone.
Amanda, I'll get together with you after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Malvika, anything for Ed, Cassie?
Oh, I wanted to share, Amy already has it in the report about Jason Reynolds. And the thing that I wanted to share was, I was here that day. It was just splendid to see, I mean, the whole thing was like buzzing with activity and people there. The thing that I basically, it's an observation, if I might share. And the observation was, after the event got over, just mesmerizing, I stopped with a few parents who were sitting just below the staircase. And one of them turned out to be the teachers who had got her students here for the Jason Reynolds event. And what they'd done was that they had gone through all his books. They were elementary school kids from Adams Elementary. They'd gone through all his books. They had read what their favorite book was, and had acted that, and they'd created book covers of his books. And, you know, they presented it to him when he was sitting upstairs. He signed them, you know, they were so thrilled. And there was this little young man, a little school student, who was continuously asking questions. And he was the only guy. And that was her student. And her observation was that she really has missed the fact that she has not been up to date on getting to know what all we do. And I kind of, you know, gave her the address of our newsletter, if she signs up and things like that, you know, and there's some more people coming and she should be on the lookout, et cetera. She was really thrilled, except she felt a little bit, I mean, again, this is just an observation, and she felt a little bit that, you know, there were some handicaps in getting her kids to the library. They come from different parts of the community, and that is a difficulty. So some parents, you know, some parents who could manage, they kind of drove the kids here and things like that. But she said she is looking forward to the next author and next event. And I told her about the next person who's coming, I think, May 30th, right? If I'm not mistaken, May 30th. So I told her about the event that is happening. And I also mentioned to her, because there are students who need, you know, summer lunches. So I told her about keeping an eye out, that announcement that we made about summer lunches and things like that. So that was absolutely thrilling. I mean, the way parents are talking and this teacher was like just like flabbergasted that we do such things in the library. So this is just an observation that I wanted to share.
Maybe she liked to be a friend.
I think she did become one.
Really?
Yes, because I said, I asked her about, are you a client of the library? She said, no, I sit here as a family. So I think she think, I don't know. I think, I think. Another thing, now, this was an observation, another thing that I wanted to share is I had talked to Brick R. Britney upstairs through email, and I just was chatting to her. And it happened like, you know, we have so many hotspots and things like that that we check out. And kind of having a little conversation with Regina Hinock of the Press for Success. And it's sad what they're going through right now, but their clients, they need such kind of service, like in a way they can, you know, either check their email or put in their resume or, you know, things like that. So I kind of made her, and I forget the person who's responsible for this kind of outreach, that, you know, we do have hotspots if they want to check out. And if they're not members of the library, her clientele, who are local Davenport citizens, so if they're not members, you know, we can help them become a member. You know, there's an online facility as well that, you know, they could go to and they become members of it. And there are other things other than hotspots and things like that that, you know, they can make use of from our library. So, you know, things which I feel, I mean, this is beautiful that we have. It's like, I don't know where it would go, but she knows we have it. So I hope it continues. And I've given her Britney's connection to Davenport future inquiries and information. Yeah, thank you. That was all.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the reports is records reports.
So, yeah, Malvika did mention that Jason Reynolds visit. I think the Friends and we are already starting to look at other authors to do something similar next year, see who we can find and who doesn't charge, you know, outrageous amount of money for appearance fee. Because that's also a little bit of a challenge, but, so we'll do that. We did click send on the Google grant application, so we'll just kind of see where that goes. So with any kind of luck, they will fund it for us. So that's for, for those of you who weren't at the Friends meeting, it's $175,000 grant. That's the only number that they're offering to really purchase a lot more hotspots, Chromebooks, kids tablets, all those kinds of things. And then connect that to our outreach services. So as Malvika said, a lot of people can't come to the library. So that would help us get those services and that technology out into the community a lot more. We got a really nice letter of support from the schools. They felt that that could be really helpful to their students. So many of the assignments they give are all require, you know, use of Google Docs and all the rest of that. So they thought that that would be really helpful to their students as well, that particular thing. The outreach vehicle, the delivery saga continues. So, so right now, we're trying to decide, we're going to check with City Fleet and get an opinion from them in terms of, we can take delivery earlier, like September, October, if we feel okay with a vehicle that doesn't have like the blind spot warning and things like that. Otherwise, we'll be looking at November to December. So, but we thought it'd be good to get some information from City Fleet. They have staff that drive a lot of these vehicles, you know, how necessary is that particular piece of equipment? So we would love to take delivery September, October, partly because we would like to have staff get used to driving it before we're potentially going to have bad weather striking. But we don't want to have that influence our decision to the point where, you know, if we want to drive this vehicle for the next 20 years, we want to have the right equipment on it that will make it safer to drive. So, so we're working on that. It's not warm today, so you don't notice the air conditioning. So we're having some challenges getting that up and running this year, as you know.
That's why we don't have spring yet.
Yeah.
The libraries are far.
So, you know, the city has started to work on, we have the money starting July 1 to replace the last two air handlers here at Maine. But we can't turn on Air Handler 1, which cools all the office areas, all the staff spaces. For us, we got some preliminary work done, so that we actually will be able to turn the air conditioning on when we need to, hopefully tomorrow. So that wasn't too overly expensive to fix some valves and things. They're telling us we're going to need to replace the coils in Air Handler 1. In either case here, I know what that amount is, so we're waiting to see how much that will cost us. If it's too much, though, I think we might need to see if we can just figure out a way to open doors and run fans into those staff areas, because that unit is going to get replaced completely, you know, in nine to 12 months. So we don't want to spend a short portion on it. And maybe, maybe you don't know how much coils cost, and you have no idea. I mean, who else is some engineer and everything? So, so once we know what that is, we'll be able to make a better decision on how we handle that. And then in the budget report, there's always a line there in the miscellaneous that is an EICC personnel restricted grant fund. So I wanted to let you know that we're going to be, it's under miscellaneous revenue and expense, so on the, it's not part of the, so be on the opposite sheet. Yeah, with the reorganization that we did, it's become pretty obvious that we should order it, basically, the records desk service, that particular staffing unit, the community engagement and learning staff, just a little bit too much. So we're going to use some of that funding to trial those three, there are three part-time staff members in that department, they work 20 hours a week, to bumping them to 24 hours a week, to see if that fixes our problem. So we'll use the grant money to see if it works. And then if it does, then we'll figure out permanently where we can find that dollar amount from. But we didn't want to go through more reorganization and changing other positions around if that really wasn't enough funding to do it. So I ran that by the city finance director, and he said that seemed like a logical approach to that. So, so you'll start to see that, that funding being stopped, that particular grant funding. So we'll, we'll talk to the union next about that, because there's a union staff members who will be asking to work an ongoing extra four hours a week. And we'll then move on from there.
Excuse me, which line item was that again?
It is.
Took me a while to find that.
It's under, oh, it's Eastern, EICCD personnel restricted. So that's left probably grant, it was probably, you know, $700. And I think that's it.
What's the cost of a grand authoring like Jason Reynolds?
He was, was it $5,000? Just a little under $5,000, but in travel expenses, yeah. We got lucky with him, though, or Lexi was really smart. Moko with Lexi is really smart. And because she had him booked before he won the Newberry Award and before his, the first book of his track series, I think that's the one that appeared on the Great American Read. So his appearance fee has gone up since those things happened, but since we had him under contract.
Give him a tip or something.
And was that the total cost or was that our cost? Because we shared some of that.
It was our cost.
That was our cost. So we did share some of the expense with Postcard and then Rock Island, because he appeared both places.
I just had a question on the statistics. One, which was to comment that program attendance is the program attendance is way up.
Yeah, we are offering a lot more programs as we put more emphasis on.
Yeah, except, I guess, because there isn't a poll, but Maine programs were up 3,556 this year. I mean, that was what it was this year. It was about 1,800 last year, but all categories, I mean, all the locations were up. So that's good stuff. And also I noticed that the circulation at Maine was up. The other brands were down, but, but that was interesting.
The thing to remember about circulation at Maine is that that's where all of our ebook circ is credited. So with that in, I would say that Maine circ is probably about what it was. So, but that's, ebook circ is certainly increasing quite a lot, and all that circ gets credited to Maine because some, one of, some location has to own those items. So that's how that gets credited. Thank you.
Moving on to new business. First item has to do with approving the contract for the architectural services with Legat Architects at a fee of 7.2% of total project cost. And that, I guess, estimated dollar amount was $148,663. entertain a motion to approve that? Motion to approve? Maybe. Your motion, is there a second? Second. Okay, okay. Okay, I just wanted to, well, I guess, to see if there's any discussion from other board members.
I'd like to add something to the motion to, after speaking with City Purchasing, they would like the contract to be approved pending legal review. They do that with all of their contracts. And they recommended it not to exceed, so instead of giving, to put the percentage in, but then also have it not to exceed $150,000.
Okay, that's good. Good, you changed the motion then. Yeah, I was just going to ask if, are you okay with, you made your motion, are you okay with making those, that amendment, I guess? Great. Second, yeah, okay, thank you. Basically says the same thing, right? What's that?
Just the cap and then legal, on legal review.
This one to mention, or we've talked about, quite a bit about this project, and Amy's kept us up to date on that, but in, just wanted to mention that Amy's done a lot of work on this. And even found some places where, you know, they had actually were going to, they had included some work in there that they had already, we'd already paid for, if I recall. But, you know, I mean, those things happen, those things happen, but, but, I mean, but I just wanted, you know, she's scrutinized this, and I think they did a very good job, so I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
One question. Does the trustee, do the trustees own the library building?
No, the city does.
Okay, yeah.
And in a contract this size, we'll also get a green sheet.
Okay, I don't know what that means.
So we'll go on a council agenda.
I was asking for the option of historic tax credits, but the city owned building can't. When the adblock was running out, they transferred it to another entity and made the tax credits and transferred it back, but.
Yeah, and we looked at it, I think, a lot of, a lot of what this project is are things that aren't going to qualify.
No, oh, really?
Yeah.
Because?
Because it's furnishings and, and electrical and.
Electrical qualifies. Heating's, HVAC qualifies. Furnishings do not. Furnishings and fixtures don't, but everything else. You're going down your carpet, right? It qualifies. Sorry. Stagel down it doesn't. Isn't that silly? Anyway, I just was asking, so.
Thank you. Are you in the discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. Motion is to approve the contract for architectural services with Legat Architects at a fee of 7.2% of project construction cost, pending legal review, and not to exceed $150,000. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Thank you, Amanda. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business. And first item there is approval of the job description for library trustees. Apologize for the confusion with that, but I was confused. Also, I would say that when I looked at this on my computer, this isn't what I received. It wasn't, it wasn't a red line. It had the, it had the marks down the side, but none of the changes were shown. So I don't know if that's how I had my tracking changes set, because that can be really frustrating. But anyway, so, but, so, anyway, that's neither really, neither here nor there. But actually, I think it probably helped understand what I was trying to explain when I sent out the changes. So did everyone receive those? Okay, okay, good. So I guess that's what would be out there for approval. Do we have a motion to do so?
No, approve.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the job description of the library trustees. Is there any discussion? Malvika?
I have a question, Steve. Is it appropriate to write, because they have to apply, we have to apply for it, right? To the link that is there on the city's website? So is it needed that in the job description, we have that link right on top, which goes to the city's webpage, which tells you where to apply for this position?
I don't know if we want to put it in here, because it might change, like a new year might come in and create a new procedure.
A new procedure?
Okay, okay, so I think we don't want to.
Okay. The reason I just ask is because I went that way, you know, I went, I applied that way to be here, so it just came to my mind, so hard to get it, you know, asking. Another thing that I saw on one of the, and again, it's all optional, because everybody has different kinds of things mentioned, is one of the things that I see in the trustee responsibility case, some on the West Coast mostly say, is about attending events. They, I mean, they don't make it obligatory or compulsory, but they do have a mention saying attending one or two events throughout the year and things like that as one of the responsibilities, just as we have like advocacy or, you know, things like that. So just a thought, that doesn't mean that it applies to us or whatever, but just a thought. That was all.
Yeah, I guess I would envision that under advocacy for library services.
Right, right.
There is, there is, so, there is one thing on the back of this, too. So this is the one item that's on the back. I couldn't figure out how to get it on the front page. She just was kind of.
I was wondering about conducting, no, I'm sorry, not that. Exerting fiduciary control, control of the library's annual, like, you've kind of rewritten it.
No, and that's, that was why I actually deleted that in what I sent out.
Yeah.
Because I thought that was the same thing, but I just wanted to discuss that.
I was looking for that. Yeah, I thought that deciding how library funding would be spent was very similar to the one that crossed out.
The control of the library.
Yeah. Oh, you picked the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Exert fiduciary control.
Yeah, well, and also approving the budget, and that transfers to one budget line and that expenditures. So I thought deciding how library funding would be spent would be the same as approving the budget, but.
Oh, okay, I guess I missed the approving budget.
That was in the one I sent out on trustee responsibilities?
Are you looking at the one that's, you have the.
It's not, I didn't include the red one, I didn't get the red one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sent it to Amy, I didn't send it to you. So the one that's in your packet is not the same as the one I sent you. Let me go through that, just to be sure we're all on the same page here. So under trustee qualifications, I added a new first item of being a citizen and resident of the city. And then, under trustee responsibilities, I added a second item, setting the compensation for the library director and all staff. And that is in the, that's also in the trustee's handwork. Added a third item, approving the budget, subsequent transfers from one budget line to another, and expenditures. So approving all those. And then the third item I added was one that was in there originally that I'd taken out, exerting fiduciary control of the library's annual. Budget. Budget, yes. And, and then thinking that the final item was the same as approving the budget, I deleted the last item, which was deciding how library funding will be spent. And also the item, with that, I sent along also the public library trustee ethic statement, so you can see what that was. I guess I would say, then, just to be sure, then, given, going through those items, to be sure that everyone is familiar with those, do your motions still stand?
Yes.
Matt, second? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? During Zima, I'll call for the vote. A motion to approve the job description for library trustees. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any more votes? Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. And just to follow up on, or something similar to what Malvea said, we would provide this to the mayor, stick it in his file, or at least I know Mayor Blum had a file of people that he had for different appointments, and that, so they would be aware of what the responsibilities are, if they had inquiries or wanted to, you know, put this out there somehow, they could do that at that point, under whatever format it would take to do that, so. Also, I guess make it clear, just what our responsibilities are to everyone.
Well, when we get to the situation, whenever that might be, when we're needing new board members, that gives us something, so we can, we can look for folks on social media and through the newsletter and things like that, because people who are reading that are probably already interested in the library, and then we can provide a link to that, so that they know what the responsibilities are.
Okay.
Is there a seven year trustee?
Nine.
Nine. Are we at nine right now?
Yes. So, and there should be three, there should be rotations, so hopefully no more than three would rotate on or off every two years, because they're six-year terms.
Yes.
So the next openings we have should be in 2020. If there's somebody who's going off, whose term expires, who doesn't want to serve another, I don't know if anybody's done two or not, and so if you do two terms, that's, that's your limit, and then you have to take some time off before you.
Yeah, I just started my second term, so Judy and I.
And somebody else.
Sylvia.
And Sylvia.
Tom?
No, Sylvia, Tom was like the next group.
Oh, that's right.
He's like two years behind, I guess. Okay. Okay, next item on the old business, has to do with the board procedure regarding library patron appeals to the board. And that was in the package of information sent out also. And a motion to approve that.
And this is also, we're still waiting for the legal review from the city on this.
Yes. Yeah, so that would be approval subject to city legal review. So, thank you, Matt. You have a second?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Malvea. Okay, is there any discussion?
Steve?
Yes, Amanda?
When it says we'll make a decision, we can make a decision right at the meeting or, or within 10 days. I mean, do we usually do that in writing? Or, I mean, I'm imagining if we do it at the meeting, it's verbal, but I guess this doesn't totally let me know what the procedure is for us in rendering a decision.
Okay, I'll follow up that with another question. Amy, how do we do the, like grievance hearings? Do we?
That was since a union grievance, there's a form that, that travels around in terms of where, where the grievance is, is it, is it with us, is it with the, the union member? So that's something that after the board makes their decision, that you sign as the president of the Board of Trustees.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess in thinking about that, Amanda's question, might be good just to have it, that we would respond within so many days, so we have time to, I guess, gather our thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the trustees will make a decision within 10 working days?
Yes. How do you feel about that?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
And then do we, where is this posted, or where is this information kept such that people can even know how to go about filing an appeal?
I think we would, if somebody has a, like, say they have a request to review something that's on, is part of the library collection, or if a patron has been barred from library use, we would give this to them when that, at the time that that happens, so at the time that we have a complaint, we, we let the patron know, this is, this is your procedure, you know, and, and send them that information, we would include it in that.
Gotcha.
How many people are banned on an annual basis?
What do you think, three or four? It's a low number. It's a pretty low number.
Between all other branches.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think the lady who was there several months ago, it's like the third one since I've been on the board.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Third appeal.
Yes.
See, we're far between.
Yeah, so the appeals are even fewer than the.
Yeah. It's, it's not a big, it's not a big number, because we work as much as we can with people to not have that happen, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, now a call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the motion, motion to approve the board procedure regarding library patron appeals to the board, subject to city legal review, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to have Marion on the agenda next time. When we, when we set the agenda, we kind of like, oh, where would she go?
And I didn't.
And she inquired of the city legal department, and they suggested that maybe we would expand item three of the agenda reports into reports of communications. Amy and I actually talked about each of those, but never thought about putting them together. Kind of, the communications, where do we put that? So do we have any communications?
Just a couple of things, very nice. We will be announcing Party, Party in the Park tomorrow, Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. at Corkhill Park, and if anybody from the library would like to join us, we're sort of gathering, it's not going to be really exciting, but anyway, we're trying to do what we can, but I think it'll be a big and exciting event. So we've gone around, surveyed the parks, figured out where people are going, we're sort of gathering partners as we go, people like, oh, yeah, I'd like to. So we do have some not-for-profits and things like that, that are going to be joining us as well. We have food secured, we have music, Chad and his crew worked on that, and it's a nice mix of performers, which was very important, I felt. So in any case, that, that kicks off, that's a little bit later than we wanted to do, but with the flooding, it just didn't seem the right time, so we had to postpone it, and so we actually wanted to wait till next week, I'm like, that's two and a half weeks away. So I might request, we have a cute little logo that the parks folks designed for us, if I can get that, I would really appreciate anything, anything our partners can do on their social media or your newsletter to push this out, so we can get you that and the news release, of course, and that has, and the logo and everything, so, and there's a map with the parks and everything. So that's coming tomorrow.
What's the time on that?
Sorry?
What time?
I'm sorry, 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, yeah, at Corkhill Park, we'll gather kind of at the, the shelter there. And so, and then, you know, the city has been very preoccupied, obviously, with the flood, that's, you know, that's also engaged a lot of people in public work, so if there's some delays and things, that's why, I mean, you know, so it's not looking as bad today as it did last week for a recurrence, but in any case, it's taking a lot of time and a lot of funding. We also, one thing I also wanted to tell you about, that we talked about at our last management meeting, so it's public knowledge, so I feel like I can, but this, the staff presented a, it's very exciting for sort of urban revitalization, but they presented a plan, they're calling the Dream Project, I think it's called Project and not Program. There was an old dream program years ago, that was like, you've got a house for a dollar, I think was what it was before we got to 10, but this one will, and it's focused on the area, you know, it's really an area south of Locust, it is all of third ward, it is part of first, part of fourth, part of fifth wards, it's the area really of greatest need in the city, and the proposal, and this is being tweaked, but the proposal is to, for, to encourage, if people buy a home, this is a single-family home, so if they buy a home in that area, and they qualify and they apply, they get $25,000 in rehab costs, and it's a forgivable loan, so they don't have to pay it back, spread out over five years, much like the Happen Program, the dollars there, you didn't have to, and you have to keep it single-family. And then existing homeowners would be eligible to apply for $15,000 in some sort of repair, people living in that area. So it's kind of exciting. They're still working out sort of the administrative details. I don't believe the home purchase will have any income restrictions, the, the, the money for existing homeowners might have, it won't be, it'll be, you know, it may have some income restrictions, but it won't be very severe income restrictions. And it is a combination of funding from, there's some money left over, carrying over, there was money set aside for some kind of project by the council, and also they're rolling in some other funding that does have some income guidelines, so there's pieces in parks, hopefully, for everybody, but this is something, you know, council's been asking for, and it is a big first step. We don't know how long the money will last, so anyway, we're very excited about it, because this is the first time we've had this kind of funding that is open to more people, and it's a bigger amount, so you'll be hearing more about that, and, and all the administrative roles, because I'm not sure what they are. What is the name of the program again? Dream. Oh, Dream, the Dreamed Program, okay, yeah, and maybe kicking off in early July, so soon, so I didn't want you to be surprised by that. The only other thing I would just say, and I don't think if this has any application to the library at all, but one of the things I'm noticing at city council is with the new zoning, the new green zoning, well, it's a green zoning, you know, ordinance, you know, we keep getting tweaks to it, people with questions about it, so, and that's typical, I think, but, so that's something that's kind of bubbling up there. And I, again, I don't know if there's any application, I mean, zoning ordinances are very hard to understand, and sometimes people don't understand what they mean until they're done, and they go, oh, and in my neighborhood, because we're so sensitive to that, there were people in our neighborhood that took us a project and looked at every single parcel in our neighborhood, and went back to the city and said, no, 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 yes, yes, so negotiated a little bit, but I'm not sure that happened everywhere. So it's just a new, one of those things in the cities that is very important to a city, but very complicated to understand, and not something they think about until they have to, so.
Does this have to do with that piece that was printed in the paper quite a few months ago, that was like four pages of really fine print, you talked about?
It could, yeah, and that's a legal requirement, but, you know, it is, I mean, the staff literally rezoned, they didn't rezone, but they literally looked at the zoning, I guess, in every single parcel in the city, and they changed, there were some classifications that, you know, zoning, a lot of zoning that happened in every American city was based on suburbanization and suburban sprawl, so they got the lot sizes bigger, they wouldn't, they separated, you know, commercial entirely from residential, and so what we ended up with is, you know, 65 miles down in Port of very kind of segregated zoning, which is not really the old way cities were sown, but it's, it was the way that, is what was happening, you know, in the, in the mid 20th century, and very typical. So this was a chance, I mean, what city planners are looking at now is, hey, you know, sometimes there are these, we need to relook at this, and we need to make it more flexible and, and less sort of, we'll have this here, and this here, and this here. Now, there's reasons for that. When zoning started, it was to protect people from noxious fumes and, and all the other, you know, you know, factories were probably much more toxic at that point, so there was, there was a reason for it, but people didn't really think about the long-term consequences, so, so that's one of the reasons why the city wanted to rezon this. I mean, I'll give you an example, Bridge Avenue, there are all these houses along Bridge Avenue that were built on the Oneida side, on the west, with town, with carriage houses, that's the way those houses, they, many of them had them, some are gone, but they have, they still do have them, in many cases, and when people would want to put a carriage house back, it would actually be denied, they would have to get an exception to do this in the old code, because the old code was designed for the suburban thing, which was you can't have, you can't have a garage bare than your house, or it can only be a certain percentage of the square footage of your house. So the things that naturally happened in older parts of the city were actually denied in the zoning, the old zoning code, because everything was based on the suburbs and what they thought was desirable there. So now the new zoning code takes into account, you know, the, the traditional areas, and so, so they don't have to go through so many hoops to, to do what is actually appropriate. And that's one example, but, you know, there've been others, so. Anyway, it's a conversation that seems to be recurring. So.
Is there, as I said, has, has there been any discussion about the cost of the flood?
This morning in the paper, I think Nicole was, you know, three or four times, so could be a million dollars. I think our flood is usually, we look at 250,000.
Yeah.
Of course, there's lots of discussions about what we should do, and people have lots of opinions, you know, about what should come next. I believe that, I mean, I would certainly advocate for a very, you know, and, and, you know, this is why I say to people, you know, the decisions that we have made about our riverfront in the 1980s, those people sat down and took a long look, made a decision, the people in 90s took a long look, made a decision, an informed decision, and, and those were, and those were right for those times, I think, you know? Now it may be time to do that again, and so I would favor certainly a very deep dive study, based in science, not in emotion, and also looking very carefully at what happens if we, you know, I'm sure there's people that can run models that show if you do this here, this is what happens. I went down to Buffalo during when we were flooded, I took some folks down there that day, and it was pretty pitiful, and, and it was coming up from the groundwater, and it was coming up on the other side of the raised railroad tracks, and it was really tough, and so, and so there's always consequences, so thoughtful, and I think it's probably different at every part of our riverfront, and it's incredibly expensive, so it's like, if we're going to do something, it really needs to be thought out very, very carefully. So I'd be certainly in favor of that and looking at that, but being very, very thoughtful about what we do, so that's kind of, that's my opinion. I don't know what other people think, I'll be all that.
Based on the magnitude of the cost, is there any, you know, do they talk about what's going to happen to budgets?
No, they haven't. You know, hopefully, we will, hopefully, being declared a, you know, federal disaster area will, you know, there may be some funding that will, you know, there will, we may get some of that money back. And, you know, we're a city that has, you know, because we're pretty fiscally conservative, we have, and healthy, you know, we have the ability to, to weather these kind of things, but, you know, on a short-term basis, so, you know, hopefully there will be some, and I don't, and that takes, that is way past my pay grade, and anyway, I would, I would imagine there will be some, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think once it goes federal, you don't get state funding, is that right?
Um, I don't know, but there, sometimes the federal, it's, feels like it's state, but it's federal money that descends to the state, so there may be, a lot of times, though, it's federal money and it's filtered through the state, so I don't know if there's any independent. Now, when the governor signed the, the disaster thing, this is important for individuals, 200% of poverty, there was, within her disaster declaration, there was a, up to $5,000, and this is for people at 200% of the poverty level, which is, you know, a limited number of people, but people in great need. The community action of eastern Iowa was managed, was off, was doing case management, but those are things that have to be filed rather quickly, you have to file within a certain time, so we've been trying to get the word out on that, but, and that's, and my understanding, that's, and there was a limited number of, again, if you look at the people that were. But, and that's, and in my understanding, that's, and there was a limited number of, again, if you look at the people that were, you know, that lost things in the flood, it's, again, there were some people on the west side, and not far west side, but near west side, there at the bridge that might have, maybe some open fit in that category. But there, anyway, there's that, and community action of Eastern Iowa has, or they're doing the case management of that. And they may be able to help people a little more. That's not the only help, but that's one thing I know that is, that is directly and was specifically in part of that disaster declaration. So I was really happy to see community action stepping up, because it was like, okay, how do people get to this money now?
And they'll do, they'll do case management for anyone.
Yes, yes, they will. They're a wonder, they're a great organization. I mean, they do, they do the heating, the heating and cooling and all kinds of stuff.
So somebody had flood damage in there above the income guidelines, so they'll, they'll still do case management for them.
Yeah.
And direct them to places and see them.
Yes, so. People on the west end are so resilient, and so, we got it. People were trying to hand out water to them, they're like, no, we're fine. There's a, and these are, you know, people, I mean, I mean, they're just, and I've talked to Rick, spent a lot of time with Rick Dunn over there, and they're, they're just very, they're very, it's almost like, that's just what we do with flood. So hopefully. The other thing about the funding is it rolls out slowly. It's difficult, I mean, there's the Small Business Administration now, they're working on loans, you know, but everything is really slow after, and of course, when people are dealing, the people that were dealing with the flooding and into their businesses and whatever, were like, immediate what happens, and it doesn't, that's not the way it works. So that's frustrating for people, but that's kind of the nature of, that's the nature of the process. So hopefully it won't be that, hopefully it will be readily available, so. Sorry, didn't mean to say so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, we're down to item six, adjourned. So before I do that, say, do you have any other questions or comments, Amanda?
Nope, I don't.
Okay, good. So I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, oh, thank you. Second, thank you Matt. A motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Is there dinner?